We're going to convene back into open session. We were previously in closed session, so we're convening with no action taken from closed. Let's start with the call to order, a roll call.
Councilmember Barnes?
Present.
Councilmember Metina?
Here.
Councilmember Parlet?
Here.
Councilmember Spurret?
Present.
And Mayor Turner?
Present. Thank you. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Hey Zach, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir. Ready, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any urgency items today?
No.
We will go on to acceptance of the agenda. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
Sir.
Great. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is accepted. Moving on to consent agenda. This includes waiving, waive the reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration, approve the minutes of the City Council's regular meeting of March 20th, 2018, and the special meeting of March 27th, 2018. Approve application 2018-12 with staff recommendations for the Quagga Muscle Outreach Booth to be set up at the Third Street Vote Room during summer events in Library Park. Approve application 2018-13 with staff recommendations for the Walk of Life Event to be held on May 5th, 2018. Adopt a resolution approving the compensation and benefits program for the City of Lakeport unrepresented employees for the period of March 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. Adopt a proposed resolution opposing the Tax Fairness Transparency and Accountability Act of 2018, and receive and file the 2018 and 19 fiscal year PEG budget. Do we have any requests to remove any of those items from closed? No. Would any member of the public like to speak to one of these items?
Yes.
Wait a second, that's not helping. Okay, thank you. Suzanne Lyons. I think the one I'm talking about is D. Is that the unrepresented?
The unrepresented employees is E.
E, okay. My understanding is that this was something that came out of, this is a resolution because something came back to you from one of your decisions that you made at the March 6th meeting, I think it was, some, a previous meeting? Is that correct?
I'm not really making amendments.
No, March 6th is when we approved the thing for the, for these people. This came back because CalPERS wanted to change some of the privilege.
Right, right, okay. Because I was at the meeting and I just didn't remember hearing about this and I talked to three other people who were at the meeting who didn't remember hearing about it either. And I think that the mayor reported that there was some new law that said that things like this had to be reported, and I think that you did. I just don't think somehow that we heard it. And so, because some of the things that I've read in the report that we weren't aware of that I would have liked to have known about was apparently part of this is retroactive. This raise is like seven months retroactive percentage change?
No. But the beginning period was already set at the last meeting. Yeah, we didn't change that.
Oh, I thought the report, see, I don't have a copy of the report, but I thought that the report that I saw said that two and a half percent of it was going back seven months?
Yes, that's what had been negotiated.
Oh, okay. So that was something that I don't think people sitting out here were aware of. Because what you just read now said March through June, March, April, May, that doesn't go back seven months. I'm very confused about this. Because we have a lot of projects and it seemed to me that there's a lot of raises going on and there's a lot of projects. When we talk about projects, we don't seem to have money, but we do seem to have money when we talk about raises and we have less population, more staff, less hours. I keep hearing we can't get the work done, but we want to pay more money for it. And that, to me, doesn't make sense. And one of the things I'd also like to know is if a citizen wants to know what the salary range is for a particular job, where do we find that out? Where's that posted?
It's posted, yeah. And then we also had it posted in our last meeting. We had the job scale of everybody.
Yeah, so that was the double for last meeting.
So, but you're welcome to.
It's on our website.
It's on the website too, yeah.
The thing that, about this is, is that the reason that, if I'm not misspeaking, is that the people in the unrepresented were more than happy to settle for their contract seven months ago and they waited for the, is it the LEA to finally settle? And they were being punished because they were, they lost out in seven months of pay because they were ready to settle early, but they wanted to make sure that everything went well. And so they waited in the wings and then when LEA finally settled, then they were actually punished for seven months where they were ready to settle right away and they would have garnered that raise immediately. And so rather than punish them, it was only fair to give them what they were entitled to because they would have got that contractual agreement seven months ago.
If they'd done it. Okay, but that was the two, that was the two and a half percent, right? Wasn't, that was the five?
That's the five percent. The two and a half percent is because they're confidential employees.
Oh.
They get a premium because they deal with sensitive material.
Okay. Like what? I mean, I'm just.
Social Security numbers, things like that. I mean, anything.
I know, it's not very sensi, your social security number anchors.
It's in reality, social security number's not very sensitive, but I mean, if you're giving somebody something for sensitive material, it goes beyond that, I'm just saying.
Okay.
Do I tap it?
Yeah.
No, I was just going to suggest if there was going to be more discussion of this as an item that you might want to consider pulling, because this is a consent agenda. With respect to confidential employees, I mean, these are individuals who have, are privy to information that's sensitive with respect to labor negotiations.
Oh, okay, alright.
Cannot be a member of a recognized bargaining unit in the traditional sense. That's why they have to be separated.
Okay, and that makes sense. It's just, I think that the thing that was the most bothersome was, it was a surprise and we were here. And so I think that one of the things that happens is sometimes we have a hard time hearing in the back and sometimes you guys aren't on your mics, so we can't hear what's going on. That's one thing. But the other thing was, there was a lot of information here in this report that I read, but I sat in a meeting and I wasn't aware of it until I got the report for this meeting, so.
Maybe you got up during the meeting and left for a while?
Well, I didn't leave, I didn't leave for a while. I didn't leave for a while. And I do remember hearing about the city manager getting a raise, but I didn't remember hearing about this other one. And I think that what may have happened is because if it was reported, that it was, that it wasn't reported as specific jobs, and I think that's what's happening here. So that may be why nobody picked up on it. But people did, I'm not the only one that didn't hear, so that's all I'm asking.
Suzanne, in the future, if you're in the rear of the room and you can't hear us, would you just sort of start waving?
Okay, yeah. Okay, alright, thank you, thank you. Would any other member of the public care to address one of the consent agenda items?
Madam Mayor, if there's nothing further, I move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we've accepted the consent agenda. Next will be our citizens' input. Oh, oh, sorry. No, that's the minutes from my. Do we have any citizen input? Great, sorry. Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move on to our first proclamation of the evening. This is a presentation of a proclamation designating the month of April, 2018, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and April 3rd, 2018, as Sexual Assault Awareness Day of Action to the Lake Family Resource Center staff. Would you all please join me?
I feel like I'm standing up here with a dream team. Lake Family Resource Center gets things done for so many people in our community that it's an honor to present this to you today. So this is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Lakeport, designating the month of April, 2018, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lakeport, California. Whereas in 2017, Lake County agencies responded to the needs of at least 289 sexual assault victims and their significant others and/or family members. And whereas no person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, and the partnership between public and private Lake County agencies is invaluable. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. Whereas Lake Family Resource Center has been instrumental in leading the way in the County of Lake in addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline services, continuing support, advocacy, and accompaniment to victims, survivors, and their significant others. And whereas ending sexual assault in Lake County must include active, public, and private efforts to speak out against sexual violence. And it is time for all of us to start conversations, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all residents. And whereas staff and volunteers of the Lake Family Resource Center Rape Crisis Center work year-round to encourage every person to speak out against sexual violence and to support survivors by providing prevention, education, and survivor empowerment information. And whereas Lake Family Resource Center and the District Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Division, local law enforcement agencies, hospitals, and schools have set an important example of how forging collaborative relationships improves the quality of service for those impacted by sexual violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lakeport City Council does hereby designate the month of April, 2018, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lakeport, and April 3rd as the Sexual Assault Awareness Day of Action in Lakeport, and urges all schools, businesses, and community members to participate in the sponsored events this month to increase awareness and public support for creating communities free from violence and exploitation.
Would you like to say a few words?
I would, thank you. Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming. I just want to say, you know, sexual assault affects all of us in one way or another. It does not discriminate. It doesn't matter how old you are. It doesn't matter your ethnicity. And I want to thank our community and the City Council for supporting Lake Family Resource Center. Thank you.
Next is presentation of a proclamation designating the month of April, 2018, as Child Abuse Prevention Month to Lake Family Resource Center staff.
Don't go too far. Why don't you join me back up with the French?
There's kind of a mix of all the county. It's not necessarily.
This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Lakeport. Whereas 3 million children are reported abused and neglected in the United States each year. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community problem, all citizens should become more aware of the effects of child abuse and its prevention. And finding solutions depends on the involvement of people throughout the community. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, the business community, and supporting parents in raising their children in safe and nurturing environments. And whereas new local initiatives to prevent child abuse include building resilience at countywide collaboration, adverse childhood experiences, nurturing families program, differential response, RCS wraparound services, infant massage, mother-wise, and the protective factors. And whereas events take place in the community to promote awareness as follows. Child abuse awareness coasters distributed in local businesses throughout the county for the month of April. April 21st, Children's Advocacy Walk and Festival. Child abuse prevention placemats dispersed the month of April at Lakeport Taco Bell. April 27th, Children's Memorial Day Flag Ceremony. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City, the Lakeport City Council does hereby designate the month of April, 2018, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Lakeport, and urges all schools, businesses, and community members to participate in the sponsored events this month and increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the community in which we live. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Rock Falkenburg, Lake County Superintendent Schools, and I just want to share with you that children are our most vulnerable population. And your recognition today is much appreciated as a, as recognition of April being National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Anything that you do to help us get the word out, to support our youth, is much appreciated. And I know that a lot of activities, a lot of dedication from this community, from this city, from our county, is going to support children of Lake County and the protective factors that influence that. We have a couple of events coming up here. Jamie, did you want to share those?
Sure. You kind of spoke about a majority of them, but the last one that I will mention to you guys, as usual, so last year we started the pinwheel challenge. And so this is our second year, and so this year we're hoping that we'll have more participation and we can get some competition going in this county. So we brought you guys all pinwheels, of course, like always, and if you want to put them up at other businesses, in your homes, in the front yard, wherever, we're encouraging everybody to do the pinwheels for prevention. So that's what those are for. And then we've talked about the April 21st is the Advocacy Walk and Children's Festival, which takes place at Library Park. And then, did I forget any other ones? I think that's all of them. I think I got them all on there. So we want to thank you guys for doing the proclamation for us, as always. We super really appreciate it and look forward to seeing everybody at the advocacy walk.
Your little guy is welcome at any meeting.
Fair deal.
He's wonderful. Our final proclamation tonight is designating April 14th, 2018, as Human Trafficking Awareness Day to the Seroptemus International of Clear Lake. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Lakeport. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery in which victims are forced to work in various forms of labor exploitation, including but not limited to, commercial sex acts and other services induced through force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas, due to its isolating nature, many individuals across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in their neighborhoods. And whereas it is estimated that more than 20 million men, women, and children around the world are victims of human trafficking. And whereas Seroptemus International of Clear Lake has declared raising awareness of human trafficking as a platform of their work. Whereas the Seroptemus are sponsoring Jane Doe in Wonderland, an anti-trafficking play on April 14th at the Soper East Theater. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lakeport City Council does hereby proclaim April 14th, 2018, as Human Trafficking Awareness Day in Lakeport, and calls upon the citizens of Lakeport to recognize the vital role we can play in ending all forms of slavery and to support Seroptemus International of Clear Lake as they raise awareness through education and other efforts to stop human trafficking. Thank you.
Just like to invite everybody out to see the play on the 14th, Soper East. Children are free. So I know for myself, I'm bringing my two young girls. I think it's very important to educate them of what is out there. I think if they are aware, then maybe they won't become victims. And that's what we need to do for our youth, is make them aware of what lies out there so they don't become victims. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Rebecca Castle, around some Devon Day hands. And some awareness, yes.
That's great. Thank you.
Little shirt, buddy. I think LFRC does a great job of training future staff today.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next item for the evening. The Hazardous Weed Abatement Ordinance. We will hold a public hearing and adopt a proposed ordinance amending Section 8.28 of the Lakeport Municipal Code, changing the date in which dry vegetation creating fire hazard conditions on private property must be abated from early June, or early July to now June 1st.
You're stuck with me. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. This ordinance before you this evening is a revision to Section 8.28 of Municipal Code, which set forth the procedures for the abatement of dry vegetation, which constitutes a fire hazard on private property. As mentioned in the statement by the mayor, the principal revision being proposed is the change in the date in which property owners are required to abate vegetation from early July to June 1st. This change will bring the City of Lakeport into greater consistency with general fire safe practices, and although a very simple change, it will go along with contributing to the overall effectiveness and safety of our residents from the effects of devastated wildfires. Following the horrific wildfires that we've experienced in our county over the past three years, in which more than 2,000 homes have been lost, the city, together with the fire department, have been participating in a more aggressive stance on the abatement of dry vegetation. However, both staff and the fire department feel that this, the effectiveness of our efforts are, have been limited by this date specifically. And if adopted, staff is prepared to engage in extensive public outreach to notify the public of the change in the date. And then also, another factor that we have found that's limiting the success of prior abatement efforts has been the lack of contractors who perform such work. So we're also prepared to kind of go out there and try and see if we can provide a larger list of folks, of people that are available to do this abatement work. Lastly, as the fire chief noted at our last meeting, the fires that we have witnessed in the county over the past three years are not, are not only capable of happening in Lakeport, but they have in the recent past, as noted, both in the mid-'90s and early ' '80s. Chief Hutchinson is also here this evening and is available to the council to answer any additional questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for council? No? We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any members of the public here to speak to this item? Chief, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't really have anything to add to what Kevin said, but I did bring another history lesson since it was enjoyed last time. October 8th, is that the ring a bell to anybody? First of all, October 8th, in recent memory, is when the Tubbs Fire cleared the life in Calistoga and burned it to San Rosa. October 8th, 1871, was also the date of the Great Chicago Fire, and the reason to this day that fire services all across the United States celebrate Fire Prevention Week, because there are over 300 lives lost and 100,000 people created homeless from that one fire. However, there's another fire of October 8th, 1871, that you've probably never heard of. It occurred in Peshawag, Wisconsin. It was what we would now, in modern times, call an urban interface fire. And to this day, they don't know how many people died. The best estimates are between 1,200 and 15, or 2,500 people lost their lives on that one day. Nobody found out about it because the telegraph lines burned down. And the Great Chicago Fire occurred, so guess what the newspapers ran? Whole town was wiped out. So this isn't a new problem, it's an old problem. Any little thing we can do to take on the enemy, we should.
You know, though, talking about fires and structures, I was struck a number of years ago, the Banco Lake County used to put out calendars and they had one with all of the different amazing hot springs facilities, all of which, they kind of looked like the Patrick Swayze movie, you know, Dirty Dancing, where they would hold 500 people and they had them at Winter Springs, Huff Springs, they had it in Upper Lake, they had it at Seagull Springs, all of these different places. And to the building, every single one of these huge structures. And this is pre-Las Vegas, Reno, Nevada. There was, people were coming up from all over the state of California and outside of the state of California to come to these amazing places, Holberg, where they held 500 people and they would be dancing and dining and doing all these amazing things. And all these beautiful facilities all over Lake County, they have some beautiful photographs back in the archives and I think probably at the museum, show these amazing places. And the only reason that the castle is still available for viewing is because the actual facility that they had that was on the lake did burn down when the dancing was going on, but the building itself had fire suppression systems and so forth. But every single one of those facilities that were built, they were magnificent and hosted tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people over the early years of Lake County. The people came up and just, I mean, untold amounts of people, if you think of 500, there's no place in Northern California, even in Santa Rosa, that you could host 500 people. And these places were that big and that magnificent, and they all burned to the ground because fires are just so, you know, insidious, so something we really need to be aware of. So that's a history lesson, too.
That's a depressing history lesson.
It was a great pre-history before that all happened.
Would any other member of the public care to speak on the same?
Any other history lessons?
Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance amending Section 8.28 of the Lakeport Municipal Code, changing the date in which the dry vegetation creating fire hazard conditions on private property must be abated from early July to June 1st. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item. For council business. Approve the updated sewer system management plan and direct staff to complete the update certification process in the State Water Resources Board's electronic database.
Alright, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I would ask that you approve this sewer system management plan that we put together. It's an update required every five years. But I thought I would do a little presentation to kind of update you as all the elements located inside this very thick binder, which is quite the process. So I'll do a quick slideshow presentation. Okay, this, this is a system management plan. Okay, the purpose, it's a management plan designed to comply with the state's general waste discharge requirements, GWDR, adopted in 2006. I'll warn you in advance, there are a lot of acronyms in this. I think they're spelled out quite clearly, but just a heads up.
I think they're spelled out quite clearly, but just a heads up. The GWDR requires municipal sewer agencies to prepare a sewer system management plan and report sanitary sewer overflows using an electronic reporting system. CLMSD adopted its first SSMP in 2010. The document is a comprehensive revision, which updates all agency contact information, includes current utility division policies, and addresses the state's 2013 updates for monitoring and reporting requirements of the GWDR. Primary goals, to minimize the frequency and severity of SSOs, mitigate environmental and public health issues associated with SSOs, and meet all notification reporting requirements of the GWDR. The SSMP identifies and addresses a variety of sewer system issues, including system maintenance, planning for adequate capacity for current and future needs. And here are the 11 elements associated with the SSMP. We'll go into those, each one individually. Start with the goals. The goals of the SSMP is to minimize the sanitary sewer overflows, mitigate public environmental health hazards, minimize inconveniences by quickly handling interruptions in service, protect the district's collection system assets by maintaining adequate capacity and extending useful life, minimize the amount of inflow and infiltration, INI, which reduces the system capacity, and provide adequate training to ensure that all operations are completed in a safe manner to avoid personal injury. Second element. Organization. Utility superintendent, which is my position, has the overall responsibility of managing the SSMP. Utilities management staff are charged with implementing the plan, and the 2018 SSMP includes updated organization chart and contact information for all agency staff. Third element. Legal authority. The CLMSD board, the city council, adopted ordinance number 872 in March of 2008, codified chapter 13.2 of the Lakeport Municipal Code. It establishes comprehensive requirements and prohibitions for the use of the sewer system, and it also established the FOG program, which is the fats, oils, and greases, and sewer lattes certification requirements. It provides strong enforcement measures, fines, penalties, administrative recourse, civil litigation, and criminal prosecution for serious violations. Element four, operations and maintenance. Focus on preventive maintenance to prevent SSOs for early detection and early action. City GIS is used to map the collection system and identify the SSO hotspots where additional maintenance may be required. Regular and ongoing staff training is essential, and preventive operations and maintenance and future equipment rehabilitation and replacement are addressed consistent with the city's 2008 master plan. To elaborate a little bit on the GIS, it's kind of nice the way that we do the mapping of an SSO, which is a sanitary sewer overflow. We map it out year by year and then it'll show, indicate if there's a particular area that's that's conferred as a hotspot, and then we know to go in there and replace some of that infrastructure or see what's going on. Element five, design and performance standards. The design or the city has adopted construction and design standards for private and public sewer construction, included in appendix five of the SSMP. Design standards apply to new construction as well as certain replacement and rehabilitation projects. We just went through this last year with the flooding, a resident along the lake, so they went through a major rehabilitation as a part of this element. Overflow emergency response plan, completely updated for 2000 SSMP, including new department policies, SSO investigation methods, and reporting protocols. A chain of communication is employed when an SSO is discovered. City has responsibility to report most SSOs to the CVR, Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, state OES, Lake County Environmental Health, and other public agencies. Dependent on type, location, and severity of the spill, and public notification is provided when directed by Lake County Environmental Health, typically in the event of a direct spill onto the lake or its tributaries. In years, SSOs have been relatively few and generally minor due to increased monitoring and preventive maintenance. Just on this real quick, the overflow response plan, generally the size and nature of the overflow, dependent on the quantity and if it goes into a waterway, determines on how quickly and which agencies we need to contact, usually within two hours and immediate response. Okay, next slide. And sewer system overflows, here's a couple pictures of what we typically deal with. Most of our overflows, since I've been on board since 2015, actually all of them, have been related to sewer cleanouts. And typically, it might be a root problem or a problem with grease. And we'll go through and investigate it containably and then do the proper reporting. All right, next. And element seven is the FOG program. Fats, oils, and greases program was initiated through the ordinance by the board in 2008. New and existing FSEs require to have a grease trap or interceptor which must be maintained. FOG can be a major source of blockage issues. FOG regulations are applicable to residential and commercial kitchens. Enforcement actions possible for noncompliance. Program success requires public education and outreach, and utilities division and community development department staff coordinate FOG program tasks, including public education and FSE permitting and inspections. And so when a new business goes in, a restaurant or whatever, part of that process is to check the grease traps, make sure it's up to spec with their, depending on their operation, as well as doing routine inspections on existing restaurants to make sure that they're they are complying. Element eight, capacity management, system evaluation and capacity assurance. Evaluation performed and described in the 2008 master sewer plan identifies deficient portions of the sewer system resulting in SSO discharges and recommends improvements to eliminate overflows. Evaluation considers peak flow conditions to ensure adequate distribution and treatment capacity during storm and wet weather events. Focus on capital improvements or improvement plan, CIP for sanitary sewer facilities, including estimated cost and construction schedules for needed improvements. A master sewer plan updated is needed as the existing plan is now 10 years old. Utilities division intends to complete this task by 2020. The updated plan will include a new capital improvement plan and updated system capacity evaluation. All right, monitoring measurement and program modification. The goal is to accurately and consistently monitor the effectiveness of the SSMPs in terms of reducing SSOs. As required by the GWDR, the SSMP describes how CLMSD will do the following. Maintain relevant information that can be used to establish and prioritize appropriate SSMP activities. Monitor the implementation and where appropriate, measure the effectiveness of each element of the SSMP, and assess the success of the preventative maintenance program. Update program elements as appropriate based on modern or performance evaluations, and identify and illustrate SSO trends, frequency, location, and volume. Element 10. Okay, the audit process. SSMP must be audited every two years. Next audit is due in 2020. We just completed an audit along with this update. The audit must evaluate the effectiveness of the SSMP and the level of compliance with its requirements, including identification of any deficiencies in the SSMP and steps to correct them. Information collected during the audit is used to plan program or procedure revisions needed to improve program performance. 2018 SSMP includes a completely revised audit template and a copy of the 2016 audit report, appendix 10. Element 11. Communication program. GWDR requires the city to communicate with the public on the development, implementation, and performance of its SSMP. The city must also create a plan of communication with agencies that are tributary, inter satellite, inter sanitary sewer system, or have regulatory responsibilities. In recent years, we have focused most of our public stakeholder communication efforts on electronic media, including web-based content, email notifications, and social media outlets such as Facebook and Twitter. Written notices via the monthly sewer service bill are also provided to ratepayers. All right, so continued. Stakeholders include CLMSD board of directors, community development department staff, and consultants and contractors. External stakeholders, including Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, Lake County Environmental Health, Lake County Sanditation District, special districts, police, fire, and Lake County Sheriff's Office, and OES. Ratepayers, land developers, environmental groups, and other local news media are also external stakeholders. Type of communication is dependent on type of stakeholder, internal, external. And so, SSMP must be audited every two years. Element 10. Utilities, I am responsible for administering the audit. Next audit will take place in 2020. SSMP will be updated every five years or whenever significant changes to the plan occur. I don't see any significant changes within the next five years. Next update is 2023. The compliance officer, responsible for maintaining the document, implementation, audit preparation, updates, and I got to give a shout out to Andrew, our compliance officer, who's in the audience, he's spent hours upon hours creating this document, so hats off to him. Utility superintendent, responsible for implementing the SSMP. CLMSD is in compliance with the GWDR SSMP requirement. 2018 SSMP is a thorough update, which includes current contact information and policies and procedures. Primary purpose is to prevent SSOs, and we must be committed to the ongoing implementation of the SSMP program. Adequate staff and capital investment are vital to future compliance. And any questions?
Thank you, Paul.
Wrong.
That's an impressive number of acronyms. I certainly feel like when my kids were little and I'd say, I would be saying, okay, so you can't spell out treat or you have to spell out treats or, you know, so it's the T-R-E-A-T, it's a type of the D-E-S-S-U-R-T. Well done. Thank you, and thank you, Andrew, for all the work you did on this document. It was very well laid out and it was easy to read, too. Are there any questions for council? Any member of the public here to address this item? Yep. And then we'll bring it back to council for discussion and a motion.
Madam Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the updated sewer system management plan and direct staff to complete the update certification process in the State Water Resources Control Board's electronic database.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item, the email retention policy. Adopt a proposed resolution, adopting an email retention policy. Kelly?
Thank you. So this evening before you is a an email retention policy. The city council has adopted a general records retention policy. However, we are proposing an additional policy with regards to email only. The purpose is to apply efficient and economical methods to the creation, utilization, maintenance, retention, and preservation of records managed by the city. Email communications are public records, and the retention and disposition of public records is covered by our records management program. So this policy, in a nutshell, will cause our IT department to delete everything within a city email account after two years. And two years is the retention for communications. So it will be incumbent upon city staff or council or those with city email to save off of anything that has a higher retention period. So if you have documents stored within your email, they need to be actually stored somewhere else. So this policy will then automatically delete after two years, like I said, and it will be more efficient use of the city server. Does anybody have any specific questions about that? It's a pretty simple policy.
The one question I would have is if I needed to keep something for over two years, do I save it in a folder in my email or do I have to put it on some storage somewhere?
So the city council would need to work with the city clerk to store that somewhere else on the city server. Because everything that resides, whether it's a folder or your trash bin, any folder you create in Outlook will get moved.
It will automatically archive after two years?
No, won't archive it.
I mean, delete after two years.
Yeah, so the city clerk's office is happy to work with you if you believe there are items that should be retained longer than two years, and we can go over our retention schedule and figure out. But if it's a communication, it really shouldn't be held for one to two years, except under certain circumstances, so.
Well, my thought was, we just went to a three-year contract with the employees. So if the employees want to save everything that has to deal with contracts for those three years, then they would have to find a place on their personal laptop or whatever they use to save those communications, is what you're saying.
But we have a copy of those archived, I mean.
So the contracts would be held separately.
Right.
So the, yeah, there may be, there may be retention policy that governs that type of correspondence that has a longer than two years, but I don't think so. I think most, majority of the correspondence is a two-year retention. But like I said, I'm totally happy to go through those individual items.
And the actual contracts, those are kept a lot longer.
Right, but I'm just saying, you know, like I have, I send maybe you an email about the contract, I was confused or whatever, and you send me back a response. If I don't save that somewhere in two years, it goes away. So if I want to go back and say, well, wait a minute, back on this date, well, it's gone. So I'm just saying, this is just hypothetical. Everything here is hypothetical. And so I'm just saying, if I wanted to have something more than two years, I would contact someone and say, can you save me a piece of space on a server somewhere under my ID or whatever, and I can leave my stuff there? Is that what we're saying?
More or less.
More or less.
Well, we're trying to save space, too. So if it's not.
Space is cheap. Okay, space is really cheap. I mean, I understand why we're doing it and people don't go in and clear out their emails and it just gets bigger and bigger and bigger. I mean, the county has the same policy. But I was just saying, if I thought personally, if I needed to save this, I would need to have a place to put it.
Exactly, and so that does come up. We have, for example, Doug has a lot of FEMA grants going on right now and he's getting a lot of correspondence and it may not be finalized in two years, but he'll come back in two years and say something different than they said now.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good example.
Yeah, in that case, I would, but, but I, city attorney may want to weigh in on this. Generally, it's better to follow your retention schedule and get rid of those things unless you really have a legitimate business need to hang on to it. I'm totally willing to kind of go take those case by case. Ms. Plankins?
Any other council questions? Any member of the public here to speak on this item? Done, we'll bring it back for discussion and motion.
Madam Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I move to adopt the proposed resolution, adopting an email retention policy.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is appoint a council member to serve as the Lakeport representative to the PEG channel board of directors with a term expiring on the first Monday of January 2020.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the city of Lakeport has entered into contract with an MOU with the county and the city of Clear Lake to assist in the board with the PEG station. And we have appointed a council points member to of the board. The last member was Mr. Thompson. We had a resident that applied for, there was no council members that were interested in being on the board. And Mr. Thompson has since vacated his seat on the board. And so the PEG board asked me to bring this back to council to appoint a new member for the PEG port station.
Thank you. Any questions of council? Anybody in the public want to chime in on this item?
Well, Mayor Turner, I was thinking this would be a really good spot for you.
Me? I'd love to. Thank you. Actually, yeah, I have great interest in serving on the PEG board. Actually, yeah, I have great interest in serving on the PEG Board. It's, it's an interesting resource, I think, for the, for the community. Okay, so I just go ahead and appoint myself? Was that a motion, Mayor? You know, that motion?
Actually, the mayor gets to appoint himself.
Oh, okay. Then I'm going to take decisive action and appoint myself.
It's definitely the action, it's not like her, their other appointments?
It's not written that way.
It's not written that way.
I mean, it may be that the, that the agreement with the PEG Board requires.
Maybe so.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mayor Turner as the Lakeport representative to the PEG channel Board of Directors with terms expiring on the first Monday of January 2020.
Second.
Do we have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All righty, thank you very much. Next item. Oh, good. We get to receive an update on police activity in the first quarter of 2018.
Thank you, Mayor and council. What this item is, is we kind of wanted to just give you an update on what's going on with calls, response times, and arrests, and things of that nature. But before I get into that, I just wanted to commend all of my, my police officers for the good work that they're doing out there on the street, because they're the ones that are, that are producing this work, so they are doing a great job, and I thank them. And also my lieutenant, who is currently out there leading this group right now. As you know, he's been recently assigned to supervise on the night shift for a while until we get another sergeant recruited, so I want to commend and thank him as well for his leadership and being out there helping that. But I'll start with, so since January, from January 1st to March 31st, the total number of incidents that we have had are 2,533. The breakdown of those, 1,004 of those incidents are community calls for service, which means somebody called the police in the city for some reason, any, any type of a call. So, 1,004 of those, and then the other 1,529 are police officer-initiated activity, meaning they checked a pedestrian, they went out on foot patrol, they made a vehicle stop, they made a self-initiated arrest, things of that nature. As far as, I believe you're all familiar with Department of Crimes, which are the, the nine crimes that were required to report yearly to the FBI for the nationwide crime stats. Those include homicide, which we had zero, rape, which we've had zero, robbery, we've had three, aggravated assaults, we've had five, simple assaults, we've had 15, burglaries, we've had five, larcenies, we've had 32, stolen vehicles, we've had two, and arsons, we've had zero. In this, the same period, the total number of arrests were 193, 164 being misdemeanors, 29 being felony violations. And a significant piece of that for me is the number of DUI arrests, because we're kind of on a campaign right now for traffic enforcement, traffic safety, and we're trying to do whatever we can to reduce or eliminate drunk drivers in our city, but we've made 45 arrests for drunk drivers, we've taken 45 of those off the streets in the last 90 days. And then, as far as traffic citations, we're at 147. The most significant number here would be 66 moving violations, which are the types of violations that are found to be primary collision factors, things that drivers do that actually cause collisions that we're having, such as speed, turning violations, right-of-way violations, use of electronic devices while driving, things of that nature. And then, regarding just a little bit, our investigations, our detective, he's been assigned 15, and assigned and/or completed 15 serious criminal investigations, which included the writing of eight search warrants for those investigations. And then lastly, I wanted to just touch on our response times for Priority One, Two, and Three calls. Priority One being an emergency, somebody needs a police officer right now, immediately, and our average response time in that is three minutes. Priority Two calls, which is, it's not an emergency, but somebody needs an officer assistance in a timely manner, that's, that averages 10 minutes, and then Priority Three would be some kind of a cold crime, like a business, somebody wrote them a bad check two days ago, that would be a Priority Three call, and our average response time over that, three months for those, is 20 minutes. So, that's currently what, what our numbers are on the breakdown that I thought you might be interested in. I plan to try to review these every, every 90 days and come back with a report and also release it to the public as well, so, and social media and whatnot, so that they can be aware of it, if there's other types of stats on the things that we're dealing with that council would like to know, I could certainly grab those as well for the next time. That's a summary of it. Did you, Lieutenant, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to come here and support the chief. I think it's really important that all these individuals, male and females out here, are getting recognized for the work that they're doing, because the statistics, we ran them back the same year at this time, and we are well above where we were before, and that's 100% attributed to the individuals we have working out there. They are absolutely dedicated to the safety of this community. We're all aware of the inherent dangers that exist all around us. It just happens to not come over our thing, and I think a lot of that has to do with their proactive patrolling out there, preventing those things from coming here. And I think they definitely deserve to be recognized, and those members support their proactivity levels and what's making this city a really good place to be and a safe place to be. So, I'm really proud of them, and it's a, it's an absolute pleasure and a privilege to work with them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. I just, I'd actually missed one thing. I wanted to also cite that we've taken at least three firearms off the street on stops in this period as well, and to include one individual that an officer stopped, the lieutenant happened to be there, that, that actually had the gun in his pocket and was trying to hide it in another location as they were walking up on the car. So, that's something that could easily have turned very violent or very bad, but because of their, their work and awareness, they were able to get this guy and take him into custody before he had a chance to do anything with the gun and recover it quickly. So, I wanted to just cite that, too, and thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd love to thank our police force for the work they do, and all the extra hours that they have to put in, and really appreciate, we have great staff.
Thank you, Mary.
As the weather is improving, I'm spending a lot more time walking to and from work or different places, and it's, it's really reassuring when I see the cars, our city police cars, you know, either stationed somewhere, talking to somebody, or just driving around. They don't seem to stop for a second. Really busy, and their vigilance, actually, I know I'm not the only one, but it makes me feel really safe.
Thank you.
And I've noticed that they're doing a lot more traffic stops down on Lovin Street, and that's a good thing, so.
That is one of the priority areas.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's good, they're out there, they're enforcing the law, and they're getting people to slow down, so that's a good thing.
Thank you. What did you say your Level One response time was?
Uh, three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
There was an incident in my neighborhood yesterday, I think, or two days ago, maybe, and, I mean, they were there a minute and a half, two minutes. It was, it was amazing. Officers were friendly, they were helpful, they were, they were great.
Thank you.
It's a hard time for law enforcement right now these days, and so, you know, really it's important, appreciate what they do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to city council communications. Margaret, nothing to report. David?
No report, thanks.
Okay.
No report.
Thank you.
No report.
Paul, anything else you want to say? Chief?
No, thank you.
Kevin?
No report.
Kelly?
No report for me.
All right. Councilor Burlet?
I'll also be going down to the Housing, Community, and Economic Development meetings. There's a lot going on at the state level for housing, so it'll be interesting.
Yes.
Might stop by Environmental Committee as well.
Thank you.
And that's it tonight.
Mayor Broden?
Nothing to report.
Unfortunately, I won't be able to go to the policy committee meetings. We are launching, or we're rolling out a full county-level cannabis program, and I am the staff person who's lucky enough to be doing that. It wouldn't be good if I picked up and left for two and a half days with all the other planners going, what? So, I will be here in my district. Okay, with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.